...of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. And commissioners, we as normal have 30 minutes, so who has the first question? Mr. Horton.
Thank you. To the applicants, right?
Sure.
Okay. Just some commentary from questions here. Basically, you've mentioned that there's no parking spaces or no anything.
Kind of if you would address it as a question, if you would, more of a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the question is, although there's no marked parking spaces, how do you plan to eliminate or to keep trucks from staying hourly, four hours overnight idling? How will you prevent that?
Is that, is his camera on?
Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is on now? Okay. Part of our presentation included that we would have cameras on the rear of the building, and those cameras directly feed to monitors that our team members are looking at at all times. You know, they're servicing a customer, they're looking, they're seeing the 24/7 hour operations that are happening on the lot. If they see a truck and then they look back and it's still there, it's there an hour later, two hours, three hours, they're going to go out there, knock on the cab and say, please move along. If somebody parks right here, they're going to be blocking the circulation route. We really don't think that there's really a good place to park on this site, and we're kind of designed it that way, so that there would not be any place to kind of not be in the way of everyone else. So if you park there, or you park here, or over here, number one, our staff members are going to see that, and they're going to know how to go out there and tell them to move along. And number two, as a common courtesy to other folks using the pumps, they're not going to be able to get by. So hopefully that answers that answer to your question.
Truckers usually find a place and find a way, but that's okay. Do you have any lot security? If so, what kind?
On lot security? Well, we have the camera system. You know, our team members know when to report a problem. There's a protocol for calling the police when there's an issue. We don't have any private security, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay. On your, how will you prevent the trucks from using that wider entrance? That 36-foot wide entrance on Fox Run, how will you prevent trucks from using that as an entrance and exit, considering you've got a 48-foot one on the north side and then a 30-foot one? Why wouldn't a trucker pull in there, use that 36-foot one and try to make a shortcut?
Are you referring to this here?
The one off, the entrance off of Fox Run Road.
Sure. This one here?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we believe with the appropriate signage that we're going to be directing all the truck traffic to this exit. I can't stand up here and tell you that no one's going to try and do it. That's unreasonable. If someone tries to do it, number one, they're probably not going to be able to make the turn, and they're going to have to back up, and they're not going to do it again. Number two, if they do get through here, they're not going to be able to make that turn. So if they try that, they're going to have to back up, leave, and try again.
So you're going to have sign, will the signs on both of the exits on 146, will they have something that says entrance slash exit? Or how will you delineate that to, I mean signage-wise?
Sure.
And will there be signs, do not exit here? What do you propose for those? I don't recall from seeing them on the designs that were coming.
Yeah, right now, the only sign I believe we're proposing is that this is the truck entrance, but we'd be happy to add to our application as a condition some additional signage saying trucks do not enter here, or, you know, retail entrance only, whatever the county thinks is appropriate, and we could work with you on that.
So you, well, I presume, knowing your business, you've researched the fact that you think there's going to be plenty of business for you, considering there's a major truck stop only five or six miles down the road further on I-71?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So current configurations for supply, fuel, truck supply, how are those delivered? What route do they follow when they come to the site?
Currently?
Yeah.
Sure. So the existing underground storage tanks are located in this area, just a little bit to the north of our existing building. I believe they come in off of 146 here. That movement, and they position themselves to fuel, I believe they actually have to back up to leave, and then they exit, I believe, in that fashion.
The passenger vehicle pumps, not the diesel pumps?
Yes.
You're moving from eight stations to 16, correct?
Correct.
How many simultaneous customers will those 16 handle?
There's, so there's 16 positions for you to fuel, so you could be-
There's, that will be 16 pump sites that it can handle.
Yep, on either side of the pump.
On either side of the pump?
On either side of the eight pumps, so 16 total.
On either side of the eight pumps?
Yep.
Okay. Trucks coming from the Buckner-Lagrange side of this site, I don't think we've seen necessarily the, yes, coming from that direction, turning right into this site. Have we seen study of the radius in that configuration?
Not on the presentation, but I believe it's in the packet.
It's in your sta, if you look at these foldouts, there's a copy of that right turn in your packet.
Okay.
I'd be happy to bring it over here if you'd like.
If I need to get back to that, I'll get back to that point. All right. Absolutely.
That's the right one? That's the right turn.
Okay.
You're talking about southbound into our site, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I give them the right one. Oh, that's coming out. Let's see. Let's see. There it is. That's, here, that one.
There we go. Yep. So this would be, you know, a few of the folks mentioned. Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and a few of the folks mentioned the ConAgra plant to our north, and this specific movement, I believe that's the movement they're referring to.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so the conflicting feedback about a potential signal at this place in the road, how do we address this? Tell me about what we know and what we don't know in terms of, hey, there is or isn't an acknowledgement or a commitment to look at signalizing this intersection.
Can I add some color to that?
Sure.
Okay. I believe that we have heard from KYTC that they have done a safety study at this intersection, Fox Run Road and 146. They've told us that the safety study warranted a signal. We asked them for the data. We have not been provided the data. Our transportation engineers prepared a signal warrant analysis which did not generate the need for a signal. But there is supposedly safety data showing that a signal is warranted here, and I was going to wait till rebuttal to mention this, but we would be happy to work with KYTC to confirm that study and, you know, be open to signalizing this intersection.
Right, so let me make sure I heard this correct, okay?
Okay. Let me just interject that, you know, if you don't have that data and don't have, you know, that you can present today, our county attorney has advised that we probably, you know, can't consider that as part of the record because we don't have anything to look at.
Sure.
But I have information.
You do have?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so-
Okay, I mean, if you're, he asked a question, he looked at me, and-
I just wanted to add some color to it, but I-
They know what they know.
I will be glad to have your input on it.
And I'll tell you what I'm, I'll answer.
Well, I heard some frustration in your voice when we did not have a representative here.
Yeah.
And I'm not discounting that whatsoever, but what I just heard-
Mr. Chairman, can I-
Can clarify for me, please?
Yeah.
May I finish?
Yes, yes, sir.
What I just heard was that your study said it doesn't need one, but the state said, yes, it does. Help me understand why those are different.
That's exactly the point I wanted to clarify for you, sir. There's several warrants that are reviewed to consider a signal. There's actually, I believe it's nine, traffic signal warrants that are in the manual of uniform traffic control devices. When you do a traffic impact study for a site such as this, you typically only look at the first three, which are all volume-based, just based on traffic volume going through the intersection, traffic volumes in an eight-hour, a four-hour, and a peak hour condition. The other, so that's the first three warrants. The other warrants look at different things, such as pedestrian volumes crossing through an intersection, is it a school crossing, proximity to a railroad crossing, or a crash warrant. What the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet has done, I'm not sure if it was because we were coming in or just happened to be at the same time. They were doing a corridor safety evaluation along 146, and we have documentation from them that they've, that study has recommended a traffic signal be installed at Fox Run due to safety concerns. It's not warranted from a volume perspective, which is why our study says it's not needed, but it is, but it is from other considerations.
Thank you very much. Jim, Jim, anxious to hear from you now?
Well, the only thing I can provide is a email from the Transportation Cabinet. There's, the data, whether it exists or not, in my opinion, is irrelevant compared to what this email says, and you can read it. Says, "We haven't decided," okay, stop. Good. "We didn't have any comments on the study, but we will be requesting the southernmost entrance closest to the Fox Run be closed due to the proximity to the intersection. The district is currently pursuing a new traffic signal at Fox Run intersection, and assuming it gets approved, the Thorntons' entrance will have to be closed to alleviate conflicts with the signal." This is from Jason Richardson, who's with the Transportation Cabinet. It's dated February 16th, 2016, in an email to Amy Alvey regarding this case. So whether there's a safety, whether there's a volume, whatever the reason is, the cabinet is already saying that they are pursuing that. Magistrate Tyce and I were at the Transportation Cabinet last week where they mentioned this, and this email confirms that they're pursuing a traffic signal.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any additional, oh, Ms. Smith was next, I think, and then Mr. McWilliams.
Mr. Hobbs?
Is your microphone on?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is your impact study that was provided to us in our packet, and I note, did you write this?
Yes, I'm the supervising engineer.
Okay. And I noticed that we were provided pages 12, 13, and 14. What were the other pages before and after this?
Okay, let me just interject. Your staff only sends you what we believe is the summary. They did submit an entire-
Okay. I wondered why it was just three pages.
Well, it's not. It has, and again, Paula Wall testified that it complies with the requirements of any traffic study and using the standards that are MCTU, is that it?
MUTCD.
MUTCD, right, whatever those acronyms are. So you only, as staff, we don't want to send out a whole bunch of paper. You only get what's-
That's fine.
We think is good information for you.
And I noticed that this was done in December of 2015. Now, the technical review was November of 2015, and when did you all find out you needed to be assertive, pre-approved to do a traffic study?
We reviewed the county requirements to do the traffic study, and based on your county's requirements, we meet the qualifications. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Kentucky.
I understand that.
The issue came up when it was submitted to the Transportation Cabinet for their review. Again, because this is on a state highway, any improvements that are done in the state right of way will require a highway access permit to be obtained from the Transportation Cabinet, and one of the little asterisk rules in their requirements for processing a highway access permit is that the engineer that performs a traffic study needs to be pre-qualified with the Transportation Cabinet. We did not find that out until in January, but at which time, we immediately took action to rectify that. Just so, just for full-
You found that out in January?
Yes, when we attempted to submit this the first time for the January meeting, and were denied because of not having comments. Just for clarification, though, all the study, what the requirements of the study, the area of the study, the previously mentioned assessment by your engineer that was submitted, actually, I believe it was in November, those were all discussed and approved by your staff and the Transportation Cabinet, what was going to be included in those. So it came as a surprise to us that no one actually had raised the question to us that, hey, you're not, you can't do this. That's not an excuse, and we were pursuing that pre-qualification for quite a while anyway, so it just gave us a little extra emphasis to get it taken care of in time for this meeting.
Anything else, Ms. Smith?
No, that's all.
Okay, Mr. McWilliams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Traffic study, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask you this question, and you can refer it or answer it or whatever.
Okay.
What determines, we heard a lot of testimony this morning about Darby Point traffic, ConAgra traffic. When we do a traffic study, what determines the scope of that?
Mr. Urban or Ms. Wall, either one?
Well, we have in our regulations, conditions, we, if you go back in time to when we came up with the idea of capacity standards, and then there was a standard set for traffic improvements, road improvements based on a new development, there's a standard in there based on the number of trips, first of all, on a particular road. So without flipping to the page, there are kind of three categories of traffic assessment. One is you really don't have to do anything. The other is if it's got 1,500 ADTs, average daily trips, and then another one is based on 2,000 average daily trips, and then it just depends on the number of trips that you're going to generate at peak hour entering that street, whether they do a traffic assessment or a traffic impact study.
Okay, I apologize for not asking a good question. I'm talking geography. You know what I mean, don't you?
Ms. Wall, do you want to follow up on that?
Yes. He's asking what determines and what constitutes the scope, most likely the details, technical details, of the study as far as what intersections you analyze, what time periods, what traffic counts, what parameters you use. The state, there are national standards that are available to use for that. There's also the local standards that are available, and the state highway department has guidelines for traffic impact studies, and that details where, what scope, what determines the scope and what locations of the intersections. During this process with this applicant, I discussed the specific parameters with them prior to them conducting the study to make sure they would include everything that we believed technically necessary to evaluate it. They proposed a scope, they drafted the parameters of that. I worked with them to provide that scope. We also ran it through the highway department for their approval before they conducted the study. So they did include all the parameters necessary as determined by the professionals-
Okay, so we wouldn't, I mean, you know, I just think sometimes common sense needs to prevail. Would we not just look at that and say, Darby Point's, you know, I could hit it with a rock from here? Shouldn't we look at that?
Well, what was looked at was traffic counts at these intersections and along 146, which would include Darby Point subdivision traffic within the counts. So from that respect, it was included, Darby Point's traffic, because there were counts, there were extensive counts done at Fox Run and 146, I believe eight hours or 12-hour periods, 12 hours. So they, they did 12, they had a subconsultant who did 12-hour counts of that corridor and that intersection.
Okay, and refresh my memory, what was the level of service there?
The movement leaving the eastbound, eastbound left, I believe, is currently a level of service F, and it remains a level of service F.
F like in?
Failing.
Failure?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Any additional questions, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I may?
Sure.
I would be, you're going to call me down for test, he does this, folks, he calls me down and says, you can't testify, you have to ask questions. So I would be testifying.
Okay.
No more questions. Reserve the right to come back?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Kane?
Just one question for you. There was a comment in what was submitted that suggested a concern about queuing on 146, and the description and the testimony of that says, hey, you know, we're not matching peaks and so forth. Does that response mitigate the concern for you? That's all I have.
The response?
That said, hey, this is not, this is not matching the peaks?
Well, I'd have to go back and hear that again, but when they, when, when we did, the traffic counts were done again during peak hours. Again, those are just counts. As part of the study, there wasn't any queuing counts done. There wasn't any observation of that.
That's all conjecture as we speak anyway, correct?
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's fa, I mean, I'm-
Right.
I'm sure, given, given this time, given this situation here, that that definitely does occur at times, but that was not part of the analysis, other than if you looked, and maybe their engineer could, could look at that, as part of the highway capacity analysis, there may be able to look at some queuing to determine what some of those queues may be as part of their analysis, but the traffic count, counts themselves were not identified as far as an existing situation.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Douglas and then Mr. Horton.
Okay. I only had one additional question, but since Mr. Urban brought up some things, I may have a couple more, maybe some more. I see an email, I see an email that's up on the top here that discusses from KYTC, I guess, about the traffic light, and it's dated February 16th. Was this shared with the applicant?
I don't know who's, it was sent to internally within the Transportation Cabinet, and it was sent to Amy Alvey and our staff. I don't know if it was sent to anybody else.
Ms. Alvey?
You'll notice on there, it's to Amy Alvey and C.W. Seymour, and CC to Jason Richardson. I don't believe, I don't know if they communicated that with Thorntons.
Well, the only, I guess my concerns are then to staff and to the applicant, if they're suggesting that there is a possibility of a traffic signal going up on 146, and that there should be a closure of the southernmost entrance, we're looking at plans that shows a southern entrance to the facility for the development plan. So why am I looking at development plans when there could be future?
Well, again, the unfortunate situation is that the cabinet hasn't been really all that responsive to the traffic study and comments, et cetera, so we got this. The, if you are going to get to the point where you're actually considering approving this development plan, then I've written a potential binding element that would address that.
Okay, but then my next question follows up then. Was there traffic studies done without that southern entrance being imposed? What would the study be if with all the traffic going in on the northern entrance, even for passenger vehicles, tractor trailers, utility vehicles, RVs, fifth wheels? I mean, I guess that's what my concerns are, is was there a study done based on if those closures are?
Ms. Wall?
The study that was submitted did not assume any closures of any other entrances.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Horton and Ms. Bonnet.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Wall? Now I've got you up here. Good, good. Tell me if I'm correct in my assumption of what I'm about to say. Level of service definitions is like A, B, C, D, E, and F. Is that correct? That's how they rate the levels of service. Level D, it's not A or B or C, it's level D, and that, and I'm reading from the level of service definition, I'm not going to read it all, obviously, but level D says it's congestion, more noticeable, et cetera, bordering unstable flow, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and that's what both the applicant and you agree is what's happening at this point, and what is projected by both the applicant and your agreement is that it will go to level, one more level, lower E and F at peak hours, and level E is low speeds, traffic, significant delays, speeds aggravated, poor signals, et cetera. Then it goes down to the F, which is very slow speeds, congestions, arterial flow extremely low, et cetera, et cetera. And according to my calculations from what has been supplied here, and what you've said about the increase in the number of seconds of delay as projected, we're talking about it could be as long as a minute almost delay at peak hours at Fox Run Road.
Yeah, and I want to clarify, we are just talking about the eastbound left from Fox Run onto 146 is the one that has the deficient levels of ser, level of service.
Okay.
Okay? I just want to make that clarified, that we're not talking about the whole, the whole corridor. Yeah, there's a table.
Okay, I didn't see that delineated, but that's, that's okay. If I recall also, according to the thoroughfare plan, and you may not know, but you certainly know more than I, Highway 146 is an arterial of a low priority, according to the state. The last time I looked, it was number nine on a list of 12 of having any major work done in that area, and they're sort of talking about like 2025, or that was the last I saw. Am I reasonably accurate in that, or is that accurate, or do you know?
I don't, I don't have that information.
Okay.
Did you know?
The only thing that's in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan is a project that stretches all the way from Crestwood to La Grange on Kentucky 146. It's not specifically defined in the Buckner area.
So it's all of 146 essentially?
Yeah, but we've been asking them to consider studying the whole Buckner area, given 393 realignment and the turning movements at the school campus and, but there is no actual funded project specifically in the Buckner area.
So, and at that time, it was number nine on a list of 12 of importance of major change. And I'm wondering, do you or the applicant have any information or any consideration as to the impact of the projected widening of I-71 to the Jefferson County line, I think it is, up through this whole area where major traffic accidents have been occurring, which would impact for the next couple or three years, traffic on 71 entrances, exits, and certainly 146 is always one of those?
The study did not be, go beyond to include that type of level of analysis. It was, it was more of a focused look, as you will, for existing today, what we have today, and a build condition, I believe, would you, one more year, I don't think it had any natural, had any traffic growth in there.
Mr. Hobbs, could you, as the traffic engineer for the applicant, could you address that?
Again, exactly as Ms. Wall had said, we were not asked to look at anything beyond specifically for the Thorntons' development. Trying to account for lane expansion on I-71 would be outside of any kind of scope that would be requested for something similar to this, because it has much more far-reaching implications than you could deal with at this level. With regard to improvements on 146, we were not asked to look at any of those with regard to how that might work, but I would like to point out on this table that if you look at north, this is, this is a table just for 146 and Fox Run, and since it's an unsignaled intersection, the only thing that shows up is the northbound left, but you look and see from a level of service perspective, northbound left turns are level of service A. So that's telling me that 146, from an analysis perspective, maybe not reality, because there was a comment made about, over here, about logic should prevail, but from an analysis perspective, the highway's functioning as you would ask it to, it's carrying the traffic. There are other, there are other things going on along this corridor that are creating what's called side friction that are resulting in some of the issues that are noted with the ConAgra plant and things like that.
So from an empirical standpoint, from your standards, it would be in a level A, but from a reality standpoint, nobody's looking at it? but from a reality standpoint, nobody's looking at it?
That would be an accurate summary.
And the A-
But I would like to interject that while that is an accurate statement in terms of looking at what's going on beyond this particular site, what's been done has been done to industry standard and the industry standard of care and what would be expected to be done.
And the AM-
Let me interrupt you just a moment. We're about to run out of time on our portion. Would 10 minutes be adequate on the questioning phase here? That, if I could get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I can't make the motion, can I?
Mr. McWilliams, move. Mr. Mesker, seconds. Any discussion on adding 10 minutes to our time allotment? Okay, all those in favor signify with a say "aye"?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, continue.
Okay, I'm about finished here. So the AM peak hours and the PM peak hours are actually AM school bus hours and AM traffic going to work hours. And peak hours would be coming from work hours and school bus return hours. Is that accurate?
The way the peak hours are determined, you know, we took the 12-hour counts, and we looked at which hours during the morning, say 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and the afternoon, say 2:00 to 6:00. Which hours in, within the study area had the highest traffic volumes? Those are the hours we looked at. I have to go back and look and see exactly what hours it was. I would surmise that it's not the afternoon school bus hours, because typically the PM peak occurs after school lets out and school buses go. In the mornings, the school peaks typically overlap with the vehicular peaks for people-
So roughly, it's from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 is the standard?
Let me, let me read what's in his study, because it is on page two in your, it says, "From the count data, the AM peak hour of the study area was determined to be 7:15 to 8:15 a.m., while the PM peak was found to be 4:30 to 5:30."
Okay, good. Thank you.
During that 12-hour-
During that 12-hour span.
If I could, I'd also like to elaborate back on the question about whether or not the study looked at improvements through the corridor. Typically, when you're doing a traffic impact study, you have to look at the existing condition and then the impact that the applicant has on that existing condition, not necessarily what's going on globally. So you look at it from an imperial perspective, what, what calculatable impact does this development have? And that's how these studies are done. What you were asking for is more of a corridor-type planning study, something of that nature, not specific to a traffic impact study for a particular development.
Right, I agree with that, but I think it behooves us to use whatever we have available to ask intelligent questions so we can figure it out. So if we have knowledge of something that is either coming or not coming, or projected or not projected, that would impact on that, that would be the reason for my questioning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Bonnet.
This is probably for Ms. Wall and Mr. Hobbs, and to clarify something Mr. McWilliams asked earlier. They were saying that the queuing of trucks on 146 would not affect the traffic that much because it was during the non-peak hours, and the only thing across the street was a subway. I would think that subway's peak hours would probably be closer to the noon time for lunch service rather than breakfast, some at dinner, which I believe was the same timeframe that you gave for the trucks, their peak hour being midday. Was that midday, or was that meant to be in the middle of the night? I assumed it was midday.
Mr. Hobbs, we need to get you, so we can get it on the record, please.
That was just a little bit of clarification, because I know Mr. McWilliams was asking someone if that would, considered mitigation and that it wasn't during peak hours, but it is peak hours for other people utilizing that lane.
Yeah, I think there's a disconnect here. That lane currently is being used as a parking area, and that is not what the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet wants it to be. They want it to be a two-way left turn lane where people use it to get out of the through traffic stream to make left turns into or out of sites. So if, one of the, one of the comments that was in one of the correspondence that we've received, I assume you have it as well, from the Transportation Cabinet, is they're going to ask us to re-stripe 146 if this project goes forward to create a two-way left turn lane. That will make it illegal for trucks to queue in that middle lane and sit there and park waiting to go into the Conagra site. So my comment was based on a vehicular conflict perspective of vehicles accessing the subway being the only thing on the other side of the road versus accessing the Thornton's and the bank on the west side of the road.
But when the trucks are turning in and out of the Thornton's, they're actually utilizing those two turn lanes in their radius. So if there are vehicles going in and out of subway, would that not create a dangerous situation within those lanes, because the trucks are kind of going where they're not supposed to be?
It could. Again, that's what the purpose of those lanes are for, is to allow those overlapping movements to occur. Now, I'm going to defer this to Thornton's. There potentially is, the site could potentially be updated to mitigate that left turn, that right turning movement out from overlapping into that two-way left turn lane. The movement, the northbound left turn movement into the site, that's the purpose of the lane. So, you know, those are going to conflict with the movements in the subway, but that's the intended purpose, is to allow easier left turns for both sides of the roadway.
Okay. Also, the data that was collected for the traffic study, when was it collected?
December 8th, I believe.
Okay.
School was in session.
What I found really interesting is that, I know there's a formula you all use to try to figure out how many trips you're going to have based on the business and the time of day and the other roads. The projected trips were 81 and 108 for the existing Thornton's, but the actual trips were 250 and 256, which is substantially more than what the projection has. Was that taken into account when you did the projections for the newly developed Thornton's? Because as I said, the proposed, you anticipate 82 trips and 108 for the new one. Well, that's already half as much as what they're already getting.
What was done and was agreed to by your consultant and the Transportation Cabinet as part of that initial assessment was exactly that evaluation. And the decision that was all agreed to was we would take the existing volume data that's coming in and out of those driveways and then add on the new trip generation for the expansion, the diesel facility and the retail pump expansion. So we didn't say, just because the calculation said there should be less traffic than there really is, we didn't go backwards. We went forwards, and everything that's new that's proposed was added on top of those existing numbers. And that's under the assumption that, you know, this, the reason why Thornton's wants to improve the site is it's doing so well. The thought is, there's not, because this is an existing site, there's not as much unserved demand as would be indicate, as potentially would be on a new site where you draw new people to there. The people are already there, the people are using the site. So we're not expecting a significant increase in retail car volume, but to be conservative, we took the new pumps that we're adding, the new fueling positions, and added the trip generation for those new fueling positions on top of what's already there.
So are the higher numbers the ones that are being used to create the rankings of the roads, the A through F rankings?
Correct.
Okay, and then one more question, hopefully short. If, if these, I guess the southern entrance is the one that could potentially be closed on 146, I actually had that question before, because that is a smaller entranceway than the northern one, and you were encouraging all trucks to use a northern one. But you were showing that your fueling truck would have to come in that southern entrance. Can you show on the diagram how the fueling truck would come in to fuel if that entrance didn't exist?
I'll defer that to Thornton's.
Yeah, that's-
And how to get back out?
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good question. Let me pull that back up here if I can. Okay. So if we, if we were to close this entrance here, we would have to have the truck use, obviously, the northern entrance, and they would likely have to circulate around the canopy?
Is there enough radius for a 18-wheel or-
Again, the suggestion about the signal and closing that is, isn't an email. It's, it's not something that's been proposed, and it was proposed after our application was submitted.
Could really screw you over if, if it did wind up closing and all of a sudden you couldn't get a fuel truck in there or had to tear down the canopy or move a building you'd already built.
Right, so if that, if that actually became a formal, you need to do this, we would move the tanks, and we'd have to come up with another scenario. As it stands now, if that condition got added after we built, we would be, we'd be in trouble.
Okay. So do you have any idea where you would move the tanks to if you would, I mean, just, I know you maybe weren't prepared to answer that.
Yeah, I really, I'm not, but, you know, I think the logical location is probably going to be north of the retail canopy, meaning that they would still be able to use this. Now they fuel, they drop fuel on the passenger side, so they would have to circulate around and then back.
I'm sorry, could you point where the tanks would be?
Generally-
Okay.
Right there. Kind of where they are today.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. McWilliams, I know you had an additional question. Is there any one of the commissioners that have not had an opportunity to ask a question yet?
Mr. Chairman, would you prefer that I ask for an additional 10 minutes?
That's fine, if you, if you feel that, yes, sir.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion? And a second, okay. Any further discussion on additional 10 minutes for questions? Okay, all those in favor signify with a say "aye"?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, Mr. McWilliams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seems like this traffic light, you know, whether it's going to be there, when it's going to be there, is, you know, it changed a lot of problems, but, created a lot of problems. But anyway, I'm testifying. Our traffic folks, Mr. Hobbs, did anybody, tell, tell me about getting back on to the interstate. If these trucks are pulling out of Thornton's and they're going to go north, what do you call that little lane, that little short lane there, that merging lane? Where you merge into the traffic? I know the traffic study didn't take that into you. Do you have any idea how long that's supposed to be for, you know, a 53-foot trailer and a tractor?
Not off the top of my head, sir, I don't.
And that wasn't looked at at all in the, for the study. I just, when Judge Vogel said something about accidents and one thing and another, and I just thought that, you know, maybe that merging lane at some point in time by somebody ought to be looked at before we create a bunch of traffic and create a potential for additional accidents, Mr. Chairman. That, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Did I see a hand down here? Mr. Douglas?
Excuse me, this is for the staff. Was my question answered as far as the KRS citations or statute reference turning lane?
Ms. Wall or Ms. Stuber, who wants to answer that? Ms. Stuber? Okay.
I talked to our chief of police, Greg Smith, with Oldham County Police, and he said, while it is a violation, it's not something that they always enforce unless it's vagrant, unless it's really dramatic, but it is a violation to travel in that lane.
Okay. Any additional questions from the commission? Any additional question? I'm sorry?
It's also a violation to use a traffic pattern to avoid a traffic control device, so.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions? All right, seeing none. Before we move into the rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant, I think we will break for lunch and be back about 20 after till 12:30. And I'd just like to remind everyone that's here, please don't, you know, talk about this with the commission today, the commissioners. And we will reconvene at about 11, or 12:20, I'm sorry. We will take on recess.